Okay, Mr. Vice Mayor, we can call your meeting to order.
Okay, good morning, friends and colleagues. Let's start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd ask Chief Soto to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Mr. Vice Mayor, at this time transitioning to the roll call for the Reno City Council. We will transition now and have each of the council members take their microphones off of mute for our teleconference. Brackus?
Here.
Dewar?
Here.
Delgado?
Here.
Weber?
Here.
Garden?
Here.
Reese?
Here.
Chievi?
Here.
Mr. Vice Mayor, you do have a quorum of the Reno City Council. The first item on your agenda today is general public comment, not specific to any items on our agenda today. We received online public comment from Reyna Wood Jimenez and Dave Stokes, both with concerns. Those have been submitted to the Reno City Council and are part of the official record. It should be noted, Mr. Vice Mayor, we received no public comment as pre-registration for this meeting. Therefore, we have none, and I will now transition to the city, Acting City Manager, for any comments that he may have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, Madam Mayor, and Council. Today's agenda contains only one item, and that is the approval of the city budget for fiscal year 2021. When we initially began budget presentations early in the year, department directors came to you with thoughtful and moderate proposed enhancements. Each department came before you with a list of needs, laying out how they could best operate while fulfilling the objectives of your strategic plan. Unfortunately, COVID has changed a lot of this. Debbie Lochner, our Finance Director, and the rest of the finance team will present to you today a budget with no real enhancements. We're all aware that this adopted budget will have changes in implementation. We've already undertaken a series of administrative actions to hold back expenses, leave positions vacant or open, frozen, and preserve the city. We'll continue to do so, and while we do that, we'll make plans to amend the budget in a smart fashion. What happens in the next three to four months really are going to be crucial in deciding which plans we need to implement and which ones we do not. Our approach to the current and coming economic challenges will be data-driven, it will be thoughtful, and it will be deliberate. With that, Mr. Vice Mayor, I present to you your agenda for May 20, 2020.
Mr. Vice Mayor, if we can just pause for a moment here. We appear to have dropped a call along the way, so we need to call back into the Zoom meeting so council can hear. We are still streaming through the YouTube channel, and the broadcast, however, we may-
We're sorry, your call cannot be completed.
We will likely ask the Acting Manager to repeat his comments just so it's clear for council members and anybody watching through Zoom instead of through YouTube or the broadcast.
Welcome to Zoom. Enter your meeting ID followed by pound. Your participant ID followed by pound. Otherwise- You have entered-
All right, Mr. Vice Mayor, I would recommend that we have the Acting Manager repeat his comments as it relates to the budget, just so we can ensure that council can hear all of them.
Thank you, and just so that I can have, I guess, a canary in the cage, Councilmember Dewar, if you can hear Chief Soto's comments when he makes them or mine, just wave and let me know that we're doing it right.
Okay, thank you again, Mr. Vice Mayor, Madam Mayor, and Council. Apologize a little techni-
Okay.
Okay, some technical difficulties, but we're back on. Today's agenda contains only one item, approval of the city budget for fiscal year 2021. When we initially began budget presentations earlier this year, department directors came to you with thoughtful and moderate proposed enhancements. Each department came before you with a list of needs, laying out how they could best operate while fulfilling the objectives of your strategic plan. Unfortunately, COVID has changed this. Our Finance Director, Debbie Lochner, and the rest of the finance team will present to you today a budget with no real enhancements. We are all aware that this adopted budget will have changes in implementation. We've already undertaken a series, undertaken a series of administrative actions to hold back expenses, leave positions vacant, frozen, and preserve the city. We will continue to do so, and while we do that, we'll make plans to amend the budget in a smart fashion. What happens in the next two to four months will be crucial in deciding which plans we need to implement and which ones we do not. Our approach to the current and coming economic challenges will be data-driven, it will be thoughtful, and it will be deliberate. With that, Mr. Vice Mayor, I present to you your agenda for May 20, 2020.
Thank you, City Manager Soto. May I have a motion, please?
Motion-
For the agenda?
Yes.
Second, Dewar.
Okay, a motion by Councilmember Dewar, a second by Councilmember Weber. Any further discussion on this item at this time? Seeing none, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye. Right.
Any opposed, please say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Vice Mayor, transitioning to our 10:00 AM public hearing, item B1. This is a hearing regarding the City of Reno's tentative budget for fiscal year 2021, adopting the resolution for the final budget.
Okay, please note that the public hearing also will open for B1 and B2 on the council agenda, and E41, E42, and E43 at the same time. Am I correct, Madam Clerk?
You are. With that, Mr. Vice Mayor, I would recommend that we open the Redevelopment Agency at this time, so therefore we can hear all of those items and take one motion.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you do that, please, and call the roll?
Yes, sir. Opening Redevelopment Agency now. Roll call, Brackus?
Here.
Dewar?
Here.
Delgado?
Here.
Weber?
Here.
Garden?
Here.
Reese?
Here.
Chievi?
Yes.
Mr. Vice Mayor, you do have a quorum of the Redevelopment Agency Board. At this time, there is no general public comment for redevelopment. I'll be looking for approval of your agenda of redevelopment.
Okay, can I get a motion, please?
No, Brackus.
Second, Garden.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Brackus, a second by Councilmember Garden. Any further discussion on this item at this time? Seeing none, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Motion carries unanimously.
As noted, Mr. Vice Mayor, we are transitioning to your public hearings, opening item B1, B2 on your council agenda, as well as items E41, E42, and E43 on redevelopment.
Thank you. Let the record reflect that the City Council has opened the public hearing on items B1, B2, also items E41, E42, and E43. Madam Clerk, was proper notice given? Any correspondence received?
Mr. Vice Mayor, proper notice was given and no correspondence was received on any of these items.
Thank you. And any council members need to make disclosures at this time? Hearing none, I'll transition to a staff presentation by Ms. Lochner. Good morning and welcome.
At this time, we will transition to Debbie Lochner. Debbie, we will now give you the opportunity to share your screen, and you can pull up your PowerPoint on your end.
Um, okay, I wasn't prepared for that.
If you would like, we can do it on our end, and you can just dictate to transition slides if that would be easier.
Um, uh, it's probably easier if I do it, but I wasn't prepared to bring up my PowerPoint. Let me find it.
Take your time, Ms. Lochner.
Or actually, you just go ahead and do it. We'll just-
Okay.
Okay.
We will transition the slide on our end. Just let us know when you need us to move through the slides.
Okay. Well, you can move past that one. All right. Good morning, Mayor, Council, Vice Mayor, who's, I believe, in the chambers, and council members. Today, we are going to be passing our fiscal year 2021 operating budget and the budget for all of our funds. In addition to that, we are also adopting our fee schedule. There is one amendment to the fee schedule. I believe we have an incorrect date in there that the valuation table, we had put that it was effective January 1st, but it is actually effective July 1st of 2020, and we'll make that change on the final document. But, so, go ahead to the next slide. What we have put together is the City Manager's budget based on the council's strategic plan that was discussed back in January. So this is just a reminder of our top tier and our second tier priorities. Next slide. In addition to that, we build it based on the city's, the council's guiding principles, which we also brought forward for you to discuss and make adjustments to earlier in the calendar year. What I want to point out is we are, item number two, our general fund reserves, that we are presenting a budget that is with a 12% reserve. We do know that this is not going to be our final budget. We will need to come back and adjust this budget shortly after the beginning of the fiscal year. In item number five, the budget forecasting, we actually do a 10-year financial forecast on the general fund and are working to do forecasting on some other major funds that we have. Next slide. And then we also, I mean, there are 17 budget guiding principles, so, you know, these are just what we use to develop the budget. So you can go forward probably to slide. So for our fiscal year 2021, 2020-21, it gets confusing with all the 20s. What we have, what we are presenting is essentially a status quo budget. It includes our current staffing levels. It includes all the agreements that we have in place with our collective bargaining units, any PERS adjustments, health benefits, all of that is included. We, in our services and supplies, we did, we did apply some increases to contracted services that had built-in increases. The only addition that we've added to the budget this year is the full-time, the Clean and Safe Team. We had added it last fiscal year as a pilot project and determined that it was worth the, it was worth it to keep it going, and we have added that full-time, and you'll see later, there is an adjustment to our FTEs moving from one department to another, and that is really a reflection of just adding the Clean and Safe Team. In this budget, we have fully funded our OPEB trust up to the actuarial determined amount. We have increased our annual funding to workers' comp, risk, and fleet funds. Those are all funds that are currently underfunded, and the workers' comp and risk funds have significant liabilities associated with them. The, we have maintained our general fund reserve between the 8.3% and the protected amount of 16.67%. We built this budget on the 12%, so that is still within the council's guiding principles. Next slide. So there are several reasons why we are presenting a status quo budget. There, right now, we don't have any data to make a reasonable revenue forecast based on the COVID-19 pandemic. We have only received a one data point at this point, and it's for a very small revenue source. But we have not, we're really anxiously awaiting our C-Tax, our first C-Tax revenue, which will be next, next week, late next week, we will get the C-Tax revenue, and that will be for March, and so we'll have a little bit of data. So that allows us to, by passing this budget, it gives us the maximum flexibility in order to make the adjustments. If we cut the budget now, and we cut it too far, we would have to do augmentations and report to the state. By putting the budget in place, we can reduce that budget and not have to report that to the state, and then we can monitor it and, you know, make sure that we've made the correct adjustments. This also will give us a baseline to measure the total impact of the COVID-19 pandemic by passing the budget that we are, which was, I believe, has about a $1.2 million deficit. That will let us know where the cuts have come, and we'll be able to track it better as well. And that is also consistent with what our other agencies are doing in the region. Next slide. So the overall FTEs for this city have not changed. Well, they've changed by adding a one-quarter person. So what we did is we moved a position from the Parks Department that was three-quarter time, and we made it full-time in the City Manager's office to manage and maintain the Clean and Safe Team. But this gives you an overall FTE for each department. We are not recommending any additions this year. You can go forward two slides. So for our general fund, we're showing property tax history. So for fiscal year 20, as you can see, our property tax revenues have recovered from the '08 recession, which really hit property tax in the fiscal year 2010 the most. What we do know is that for fiscal year 21, our projections for ad valorem property taxes are likely going to hold, because when the pandemic hit, the lien date had already passed, and the appeal period had already passed. So for fiscal year 21, our property tax should maintain at the level we have projected. We may see that change in fiscal year 22, but we'll be continuing to watch that. Next slide. We like to show you our C-Tax history. Again, we have not received March C-Tax, but as you can see, for the year, we were trending well above the prior three years, that we were doing fairly well in this revenue source. We don't know what's going to happen to that, but that line is likely going to go down rather than up for the last three months of the year. But we have built our budget based on what we were seeing up to about February, because that's when we build our budget. So, next slide. This next slide is really interesting, and this kind of shows you how, when C-Tax goes down, property tax is still going up, and then when property tax goes down, C-Tax is going up. So these two large revenue sources for us work kind of opposite of each other, and we will continue to monitor this. We do have a 20-year historical spreadsheet that shows us how these revenues behave, and we'll continue to monitor that and make sure that we stay on top of it. So the next slide shows us the general fund revenues by our categories. So categories being, the categories you typically will see in the CAFR, and oftentimes, some of these are in the budget maybe slightly differently. But you see, C-Tax is 35% of our revenue, and Property Tax is 27% of our revenue. Another thing to point out here is fees, licenses, and permits is 23% of our revenue, and that's an area that we need to continue to monitor, and we will continue to monitor that. Next slide. So we do show you a picture, and then we always give you the numbers. Sometimes we give you the numbers first and then picture afterwards, but always with finance, there's a picture to go with the numbers. This is an overall estimate of where we expected our revenues to go for this coming year. We do know that the C-Tax will be less than that for fiscal year 20. We're estimating that it's going to be $6 million less than we had anticipated with the budget. With property taxes, we expect that to maintain it steady. Licenses and permits is an area that we continue to watch. Intergovernmental revenue is, that one I would expect to go up, because we do put grants there, and we are, we have been getting some grants, and hopefully we'll continue to get more grants. When you, so special assessments, those are essentially a pass-through and should maintain that revenue where it is. Personal property sales and disposals, we don't budget for that. We don't budget for gains and losses. We don't budget for grants, so we could see these revenues adjusting over time. The transfer from the Room Tax Fund, that is going to definitely go down. That is what we use to do the projects in the general fund and to do the park mix. So, next slide. We want to show you how we projected our revenues, and as you can see, in the charges for services and the franchise fees, we had already adjusted those revenues down. A 1% adjustment in your franchise fees downward is not a significant amount of revenue, but we know in the franchise fees, we have heard from Waste Management that the quarterly fees were about a quarter of a million dollars short of what we had expected. So we know there's going to continue to be pressure on that revenue, and we'll have to see what comes from the other franchise fees. As far as the fines and forfeitures, we had also already projected that to go down. So we will continue to monitor these revenues and continue to maintain our conservative approach. So the next slide shows us the general fund expected expenditures. And so our expected expenditure total in the general fund is $224 million. In that, we then have a fine-fund balance. What that is, is our expected amount of encumbrances that will roll over from this year. With the purchasing freeze, well, it's not really a freeze, I guess, with the additional purchasing approvals that are required, that number could go down. We may not have as much encumbered at the end of the fiscal year as we had expected. The transfer for capital, public works capital projects, that is 1% of last year's operating budget. That is the council policy of what we put in for general fund capital projects. That is an area that we may reduce when we look at reductions in the budget going forward. So, next slide, we'll give you the picture of the expenditures by category, and those categories really is to show the services and supplies and the employee benefits really are the largest portion of our budget. And so if we are to, if we're going to be able to maintain our staffing through this pandemic, we're going to have to be very diligent about the services and supplies, which is only 16% of our budget. So we're really going to have to look at how we manage through this, and we will be working on plans. The next slide really does show the expenditures by function. So you will see that public safety is our largest function, and these are categories that would tie to our CAFR and ties to the state document that we have to provide that says what our budget is made up of. So again, public safety is the largest portion of our budget, general government being the second largest, which is significantly less. So as we look through our expenditures, we're going to have to really, really tighten our belt and look at what we're doing, and making sure that what we are doing is providing the best service we can to the community with the reductions in the revenues we're expecting. The next slide gives you the numbers of, by department, where those budgets lie in the general fund. And each one of the departments are working on contingency plans, 5, 10, 15% reductions, and some ideas of other places that we could look at reducing our budget. We will come together shortly after the beginning of the fiscal year, when we have the data, and look at those plans, and come up with a strategic plan for council to discuss. So the next slide. This next slide shows you kind of an over, overall where the budget goes. And so this is how it is categorized and reported to the state. So essentially, you can see salaries and benefits at the top are our largest line items. We have a very small piece of capital that goes in Fire Department that may be part of what they reduced this year. We'll have to see if that. We have a $1 million contingency built in that resides in the City Manager's office for those unforeseen things that come up, and we need to react to immediately. For the intergovernmental, which is what we call, sometimes called non-departmental or intergovernmental, what we have in there is our OPEB and our retired employee insurance. So the $6.8 million is our pay-go amount, and then the OPEB, the $2.2 million is what we are putting into the trust to try to get that funded, to reduce our overall long-term obligation for retiring medical. The Freight House is a pass-through. It's money we receive and then pay out. Utilities, that covers the utilities for the entire city. The Public Safety Center debt payment, that was an estimated amount that we had built into the budget when we expected that we were going to issue debt for public safety. This would be an area that we could take that nearly $1.8 million to help fill the drop in revenue. There's an additional heart-lung liability that we put into our long-term liabilities. There's the RSCDA agreement that we pay. There's severance pay and pay-for-performance that we put in there for those, those jobs that are critical, that we cannot get, live without. Maybe there's only one in the city, or it is providing a critical function. I don't know, maybe a finance director, and you need to pay the severance pay. Just kidding. That, this allows the City Manager to make that determination that that position needs to be filled before we have recouped the cost. And then there's some other expenses, like our security in the City Hall, miscellaneous bad debt, those things. In the debt service, again, listed as services and supplies, we have our body camera loan and our Acela loan. Those are wrapping up pretty soon, but they are still on the books. For transfers out, we have our transfer out to the Community Assistance Center, and that is, a good portion of that is related to the Triage Center. We have our debt service that we send out for various bonds from the general fund, and that would be bonds that may have a C-Tax or a Room Tax pledge that we are required monthly to spend over the revenue for bond payment. We have the Fire Apparatus Debt Service, General Capital Projects, and then there's the Fire Apparatus Replacement Program. So that is overall our budget in a nutshell, when you look past the departments. That leaves us with an ending fund balance of $28 million. Next slide. This one really gives you just a more high-level overview of what- This one really gives you just a more high level overview of what is built in the budget. And as I told you, what we have in, in the budget is a status quo budget with a small deficit of 1.2 million and a 12% reserve. Next slide. So we look at fund balance and this has been our fund balance historically. We were down to very, very limited fund balance at the height of the recession in 2011. I believe it was under 2% at that point in time, which is never a recommended fund balance. What we have put together on, on this budget is a projected 12% fund balance. We've been trying to rebuild the fund balance incrementally as we came out of the 08 recession. And last year, or the current year that we were, we're in now, we had built the budget on 11%. We built fiscal year 21's budget on 12%. Okay, let me go through a couple of slides. So our special revenue funds, these are the special revenue funds that we actually budget for. There are some other special revenue funds that we don't budget for, such as the stabilization fund. For the most part, we budget everything in these funds because we expect that we're going to spend them. As you can see, the community assistance center actually has a little bit of fund balance. That's a good thing. And the streets fund actually has a little bit of fund balance to do those street projects. That's going to be important because in, we expect the street fund to, to be reduced going forward. We think gas taxes will be down, as you know, people aren't driving as much as they used to and the price of gas has gone down. So those kind of coupled together should make the gas tax go down significantly. And then we also know room taxes going down significantly. So we're, we're going to be looking at that as we, as we go through this to see what we really can afford and can't afford in room tax. And the next slide. So within our special revenue funds, we do have capital projects. The CDBG projects for this year, we had expected about a 1 point, just under 1.8 million dollars to come in available for projects in CDBG funds. The CDBG subcommittee has been unable to meet, to allocate those two projects. And we will be looking at what our CDBG revenue is and convening that committee again when we have that opportunity and coming back to council to outline the, the actual proposed projects for CDBG funding. So that will be coming later in, in the year when we have the opportunity to meet, excuse me while I plug in my computer. So in the streets fund, we had a number of projects built into that. We may have to reduce some of these projects. It would likely be in the neighborhood street program because that's the largest dollar amount, but there, that is a, an area that we're likely going to have to cut back on the projects because I don't expect the revenue to come in as projected. In the room tax fund, we have traditionally budgeted $50,000 a year for public art. So that is in the budget and we'll be taking a look at that as well. Next slide. Actually, yeah, there you go. For the general government capital projects, so we have capital projects in the general fund. We have general capital projects, we have the room surcharge, that's the $2 surcharge capital projects, we have parks and then we have capital tax projects. So the general projects are, they, these are the amounts in there. The $2 surcharge, while they were expecting $2 million in revenue, that revenue has been impacted and we will have to look at the projects that we can afford that were scheduled to be done at the bowling center. Next slide. So this kind of lays out what those general projects are. In the general capital projects, there's an EOC contribution for the, to fix the roof. We typically give capital maintenance for parks, they have $400,000. And there's in public works, there's the city hall parking garage improvements, there's facility maintenance and we have an additional $400,000 that goes as maintenance for our buildings. And so this is just a small increase there. We have some security upgrades needed out at our courtyard and then we had allocated $500,000 to replacing our parking meters. And technology, we typically provide some server replacement money and we're also doing some work on the AV in the seventh floor conference room. And then in fire, we have the apparatus replacement program. That is what is expected to be spent in the coming year on apparatus for the fire department based on the replacement program the council approved. For public works in the room surcharge, we were working on national bowling center event center projects. Those are going to need to be reviewed when we have an idea of what the actual revenue will be and, and we'll have to reduce the amount of projects that can be done there. And then in the capital tax project fund, we have primarily funded the public safety radios in this fund. We typically every year put in $50,000 for police evidence lockers and we'll be looking to see if they need it this coming year, but we will definitely be needing to fund radios. So next slide, probably two. So this overall debt service funds in the city of Reno would be the general fund debt service. Sales tax bonds at Cabela's, as you can see that the revenue is not needing the debt service. It says services and supplies because that matches what we report to the state, but it is the, the debt service payments. The railroad, that's the retract. There's, that just shows we can pay it, event center bonds, we, we can pay those. And the SAD debt service, those are, like we said, a pass through, we get the money and then we, we pay that, the debt. What you see as fund balance is the amount that is required for each of those bonds to be held in reserve. So it doesn't, it's not really extra money. It is a requirement of the bond covenants that we hold a certain amount of money in reserve and that's what that reflects. So next slide. So our proprietary funds are our sewer fund, the building permit fund, our fleet fund, risk, self-funded medical and workers' comp. The sewer fund, the non-operating expenses primarily, the, the bulk of that is the $55 million that we, or the non-operating revenue, the $55 million bond that we got, that's the bulk of what's in there. And, you know, there, there's a significant amount of capital built into that. In the building fund, it looks as though the building fund is still making money and we will continue to look at the fees in the building fund each year to try, to ensure that we are not exceeding CPI, but also to look at making sure that those fees are appropriate and that we're not making money. Proprietary funds are not allowed to, to make money, that they, they really are designed to break even. The motor vehicle fund, there is a cash balance in there. And we, we transferred money to the fleet fund when we did the settle up a couple weeks ago, when we did the augmentation. So this is an area where we may look at reducing some of the, the revenue going here and pay down a little bit of, of fund balance. But overall, the, the fleet fund was on a five-year program to get back to where they were, and this is year three of that program, so we don't want to cut it too far. We want to make sure that we are maintaining our fleet. What we're looking at is possibly pooling vehicles and reducing the fleet temporarily and, and really looking at what we're doing with the fleet. For risk, this is an area where I believe we are still underfunded and while we are transferring over, I, I believe it was one and a half million dollars, we said, on our flexibility that we, we could take it from risk, this is not an area where I would recommend that we reduce what we have put in the budget because this is an area where we have some lawsuits that could, could seriously affect this fund. The self-funded medical, we are taking a premium holiday and, and our agency partners that also participate in our self-medical, self-funded medical plan are getting the same benefit. So they are actually, their, their employees as lo, as well as ours will see no medical premiums going out of their paychecks for the month of May and June of this fiscal year. And those agencies will also have a little bit more in their cash flow as they try to work through what's happening within their organizations as well. Workers' comp, again severely underfunded, but is an area that we have money in the bank to continue paying our existing claims. We just don't have the 80% confidence that we could pay all the claims that's come due that you would typically want in that fund. So next slide. In the, the capital outlay that happens in our proprietary funds are just in the sewer fund and the fleet fund. Fleet fund is really when they're just replacing vehicles. In the sewer operations and the sewer capital, there are two, as you can see, the list of the projects that are proposed. Next slide. And we get to go to another one. So redevelopment agency. So we have two redevelopment agencies as you are aware. The RDA one, both redevelopment agencies have a general fund and a debt service fund. RDA one is in our downtown area and it includes the parking garage on Sierra Street and the ground floor retail space. That is managed by Colliers who manages it, pays for the upkeep and then we split any, any income that may come off of the parking garage. So those revenues are pledged to debt and so any excess parking garage revenue that comes in, we transfer over to the RDA one debt service fund. There is not enough property tax increment revenue in this redevelopment area. We had a settlement agreement for a period of time that has expired and this is an area that we need to work on, but we plan on coming back to the council to discuss RDA one maybe in December so that we can, when we have more data, know where everything's going. So next slide. Next slide really is just a picture of the RDA one boundaries. And then the slide after that is the numbers associated with the redevelopment area number one general fund. As you can see, we are spending $359,000 of our fund balance in order to meet our obligations in this fund. Next slide. This slide really shows our debt service. As you can see, again, we are not, we're not bringing in enough revenue to pay our debt service payments in this, in this redevelopment area. So we have, for the last two years, used nearly $2 million of fund balance and we're proposing to do that again this year. We have been expecting this fund to run out of money since 2019, but the revenues were doing better than we had projected, so we, we were able to get through a couple more years, but you can see the fund balance has gotten down significantly below our obligations. Next slide is kind of an overview of RDA two. So there are seven different, seven different areas that make up RDA two and the next slide really is, is a picture of that. So the property tax revenues have increased in this area to where RDA two has been able to take on the baseball obligation in full. And there's just a small amount of debt. So on the next slide, we talk about the general fund in RDA two. And this has been improving. So the transfers from the city to Reno's general fund have gone down. So this current fiscal year, we projected $100,000 would be transferred from the city of Reno general fund to pay the baseball agreement. We still have that in the estimated, but I believe the increment has come in a little bit higher and we might not need to transfer the $100,000. We're still looking at that. But in fiscal year 2020, 21, we are not doing any transfer from the general fund to support baseball. The baseball agreement is fully funded through this RDA area. And the next slide shows the redevelopment area two debt service fund. Again, there's just a very, very small amount of debt in here. There is a redevelopment bond in Cabela's in addition to the sales tax increment bond that's not being paid. There is a redevelopment area bond that is being paid. It's a very small bond, but it is being paid out of this fund. And, and the fund balance really is the required, you know, we're, we have a required reserve for this debt, the small debt we have. So again, that is RDA two. So that, with that, if there's any questions. Oh, and one thing I did want to say that is not in the presentation is the total budget for the city with all of our funds is $761 million. So that's, next slide is the question.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Lochner. And also I think just because the record wasn't clear at the top, you are finance director at the city of Reno. I'm going to start with questions by my colleagues on the phone. Let's start with council member Jordan, you had your hand raised.
Thank you very much. I have a number of questions, so I'll just start, start with a couple specifics. The, you mentioned something about the CAC, the Community Assistance Center had a fund balance of $403,000. Is that correct?
Yes, that is what is on the books.
Is, are those funds restricted for any particular, is it operations, is it facilities or both?
So that, that's the money that we send over to the CAC and I believe it is, it's not available fund balance, it is obligated to things that are ongoing already, but I can check in and get you a little bit more detail about that.
Yeah, that, that would be great.
Well, it's, it's not available to be spent outside of the CAC as far as I know.
And that's what I'm trying to figure out, what that, what outside the CAC means. Does it mean for just the operations, the people, or is it for the facility, ancillary facilities that they manage? I'm trying to figure out what restrictions on that 403. So, and you can, when you find that, I can get that at a different later time. So, so if I understand correctly, the overall budget, $761 million. When we have asked staff to come back with their reductions, proposed potential reduction, we have asked them to do 5, 10 and 15%, correct? So that, the 15% is off the 761 or is it off of a modified budget amount? Is it off the grand total or is it a?
The 5, 10, no. The, the 5, 10 and 15% is associated with mostly the general fund, but those funds, we're looking for 5, 10 and 15% across the entire organization, but we're mostly concerned with our general fund. So there are other funds where I've also asked for the same reductions, like, such as the street fund, where we know there's going to be adjustments in there and, and how they can adjust those projects to make sure that we're getting the, the neatest stuff done.
they can adjust those projects to make sure that we're getting the neatest stuff done, you know, so we don't degrade further, but maybe delaying some of those projects as we look at the revenue. And also room tax is another area that we're going to need to cut. Our sewer fund revenues are pretty stable right now, but we're looking at, we need to have ideas in our pocket in case there are issues that come in those funds as well. So we're looking across all funds, but not, not every fund is affected because not every fund has a similar revenue source.
Councilmember Jordan, can I...
I understand that. But my bigger global question is...
Councilmember Jordan, can I just come back to you on the next round? Thank you so much. And I'm going to give everybody much more grace because it's important stuff, but I just want to keep everyone having the same opportunity. I'll go now to Councilmember Breckus.
Thank you, Ms. Lochner and your team. I know what a job it is to put the budget together and also this year you're going to be doing it twice, so real workload for you all. You know, I think on the property tax statement that you say we have recovered on property tax, oh, are you all hearing me? I gotta, I said my internet is unstable, am I okay?
We hear you, thank you. You're good.
Okay, okay. I think on the property tax, that would be a good one to show per capita how that is. I know population numbers are tough to come by sometimes, but I think population, property tax is not necessarily showing the whole picture because it should be on a per capita basis. That's just a, kind of a metric. The, some of the questions I have are with baseball stadium and the bowlers. Has anyone looked into those contracts to see if there's any force majeure poll provisions? And that's kind of the term of the day related to, you know, if the bowlers don't come, are the bowlers coming? What do we have to do with the fourth floor? Because that fourth floor, that $2 surcharge was pretty flexible into other downtown sort of things, like downtown tourism needs. And maybe that could be moved to another place. And same with baseball, if they're not operating, do we still have to pay them? And then I also, I'm going to just make up, with the $12 million reserve in that building proprietary fund, which we're getting into arbitrage questions, I'm just going to bring it up for the good of the order and sync that into the general fund going forward. It's always been a revenue source that should be on the table like business licenses. But let me ask you, on the redevelopment agency two budget, I know that the map is along the Fourth Street corridor. And does the council have the option to, at this point in time, dedicate some of that increment to other needs like the safe and clean team and the ambassador needs along the Fourth Street corridor? I mean, we can use redevelopment increment pretty broadly, can't we? If it's consistent with the plan?
You know, I'd have to look at that, that's more of a legal issue that I don't have the answer for.
I promote to the council that they should take a look at that balance that is starting to accrue in the redevelopment two and see how we want it to best be deployed to things, priorities, and then things that aren't getting met. And then I have another question before I'll go give it up for the next round, is the city hall seismic, where is that money sitting?
It would be sitting in a capital project for the city hall seismic retrofit.
Is it encumbered?
Yes.
So we're moving forward with that. Have we let out a contract?
I do not know.
I'd like that answer. And then also, what about, we used to have a blight fund and an affordable housing fund that were general fund in origin, taken out a couple of years ago. Where are those, are those spent down? I think they were just line items in the general fund.
No, they actually have separate funds and we don't have money budgeted out of those funds.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Breckus. I want to just ask Ms. Lochner, because I see it on our agenda for the 27th, as far as the blight fund, there is a transfer proposed from the blight fund to a project with Habitat for Humanity on the next agenda. Is that what Ms. Breckus was asking about?
Well, so what, we don't typically budget for the blight fund. We don't budget for the blight fund. What will come forward is if the council approves a project out of the blight fund, then we will add it to the next augmentation. But that's a fund that we don't budget. It's not like, like one of the evidence funds includes where we say, we expect you're going to spend it all, so we budget for the full amount of the balance with the blight fund. We're a little bit more cautious with that as we want to make sure that the council approves what goes to that, so it has to come forward to the council for approval.
Okay, makes sense.
What else is in the blight fund? What is the balance in the blight fund?
Last I heard, it was around $350,000. It's not a significant fund, but we can check.
Thank you, Ms. Lochner. And I know that you're taking some notes of the questions that are asked as they come along. And of course, you know, budgets are big and complicated and have lots of line items. No one's asking you to have memorized every one of them, but I thank you for your attention to detail. Let's go to Councilmember Weber. You've been patiently waiting. Thank you so much, Councilmember Weber.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate all the work that's been done on this budget and by everybody and all the meetings that we've had. I thought it was really a very good thing that we had as many meetings as we did on the budget. However, my concern is that it was all done prior to COVID-19. Our strategic planning, our budget meetings, and so I am concerned that by not addressing COVID-19 in our, in our budget right now, with some sort of decrease to every department, I really feel that we are sending a message out that we're just going along with the crowd. We're just going along and, and I don't even think it's going along with the crowd. I just, I'm very, very concerned what this shows the public. We know we will have deficits. We know that that is going to be happening. And why couldn't we have that included somewhere in this budget? Do we know what the costs are currently or estimated at just on our payments to Washoe County and all that? Why isn't that being taken out? Why isn't there just some line item that we can at least show that, that we're, it feels to me like we're living in a dream world and we're not being fair with the public by not showing some deficit due to COVID. So I don't know if you can answer that. I'm just concerned about that for the public's perspective.
Well, the only thing I can say to that is that without any data to go on, I can't make any projections. I mean, we can, we can throw a number on the wall and see if it sticks and see if we were right. But if we pass a budget that, you know, cuts significantly, if we pass that budget and we found out that it wasn't as bad as we were, as we thought, then we're in a different situation of having to add back and report to the state. There was a request at one point that the state allow us a couple more months in order to pass a budget that was more realistic and the state declined to let us do that. So without any data to support it, I don't know how to cut a budget.
It makes, in my own household, if this were the situation, we would obviously all be looking at a 5 or a 10% cut. I mean, it's going to be greater than that. Why isn't it that we just took a smaller cut just showing the public that we know? We know that this has had an impact. You've already suggested what we've had. So I don't know why we couldn't have had, just done a small, you know, notice of, we know we're going to go through certain things. So, I don't know. Thank you, Debbie. I appreciate you, Ms. Lochner.
Ms. Lochner.
I just appreciate you doing what you're doing. Thank you.
Ms. Lochner, I want to just say a couple of things and perhaps respond to my colleague. There's no doubt that each one of us observes that there are some financial issues that are outside of our control. I have the privilege of sitting on the Financial Advisory Board and am doing what each of us are doing every day, which is looking at the news, looking at the economic forecasts. I mean, just this morning, the Nevada League of Cities provided Jeremy Aguero's analysis of what he thinks potentially could happen. And it is all informational and I think it's important that we take it all in and then use it to make good decisions. Obviously, there are things that we did do immediately. I know that we laid off nearly 400 people in our Parks and Recreation Department. I know that we've transferred where we could and we've also done significant budget freezes in terms of hiring freezes. We have made decisions about where or when to not transfer funds when they didn't need to. There, of course, was some other additional items that you've shared with us over the last couple of weeks. I think we are telling the public that we understand the gravity of the situation and we're taking a approach that says, while the state of Nevada requires us to have a particular path and timeline for the adoption of a budget, we know that whatever our budget is that's submitted will have to have changes. We've made some of the important cuts that we can make immediately. You've identified other areas where cuts will come from, whether that's rolling over budget dollars from last year, whether that's stopping transfers to different kinds of funds. All of those things are our reaction to this crisis. And if our job, I think, as councilmembers, I believe at least one of them, is to share that with the public in ways that it is easy to be understood. Because I can tell you that your presentation is awesome, but it's a lot to get through for just average member of the public. Even if we put it out there, it's hard to digest it. You made a comment earlier that I thought was very important, which was, for every chart we have, we also have a picture. And I think that's important and that's not patronizing in any way. I think that tells the story about what we're doing. I think too, from my perspective, one of the key discussion points that has to be understood, and perhaps where I diverge a bit, is that government is not a business. Businesses are not governments. We have different functions. Businesses operate, and in my own household, we operate on a budget that is affected dramatically by some of the things outside of, you know, the normal. But governments are not profit-making industries. They are here to serve people. So there is no profit in running a police department, for example. There's no profit in making sure that certain public services are provided. I don't want us to confuse the importance of principles that businesses can bear and bring to bear on governments with what an actual government does. Because businesses are good about being innovators, they're good at watching the bottom line, all those things. But just saying that government should be more like business is anathema and that is not a correct way, I think, to observe government financing. So, Ms. Lochner, again, I thank you for the presentation. I saw yesterday the county did essentially the same thing we're doing, which is they adopted a status quo budget. They understood that with the changes that would come when we have data to apply, that they would have to make decisions. I thank your department and all of your team for working on those things. Let's do the best job we can of sharing what we are doing in order that we can get through this crisis. No one's coming to the rescue. It's not like I think that the federal government is going to save us somehow, but we have to be mindful and make good decisions based on data and based on expertise in this area. And I thank you for participating in that. I also want to go to our acting city manager, Chief Soto, and because I think he may have some comments that he wanted to offer on this topic.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Reese. And I do understand some of the concerns that have been brought forward today by Councilwoman Weber and all of our council members and mayor. I've had personal conversations with all of you in terms of our budget and that process and also making sure that our community understands what we're doing and how we're responding and reacting to COVID-19. And with that, I've directed our chief of staff and our communications team to come up with a plan for public engagement for this budget augmentation process. This is going to include a lot of different things. Obviously, it's somewhat difficult to do that with COVID-19, but we've been doing, we've been successful with some of our town halls, our virtual town halls and other forms of outreach to make sure these changes to the budget align not only with your strategic plan, but also with expectations from our community and our residents. So I appreciate the input and we are working towards a fix for that concern.
Thank you, Chief. I'm going to come back now to Councilmember Dewer in this round. You're the next person.
Sure. Debbie, thanks for a great presentation. I do think you're taking just the right tact that we need for a strategy, which is to do a hold the line budget. But I do want to highlight a couple of things. Were already mentioned, but I think it's worth repeating, that in doing the employee freeze, so not filling employee positions that are vacant, you've estimated a saving $5 million. And I think that's very significant right off the bat. The layoff that we already did of our temporary part-time employees, 350 to 400 employees, I think is very significant. And I do think that you are right to wait until we know so we can be more thoughtful and more strategic about where we do make the cuts. I think all of us are paying a lot of attention. One of the things that jumped out, of course, is something like room tax. The casinos have been shut down for a couple of months. They're postulated to be some of the last to open. And so they're some of our greatest housing and that's where a lot of the room tax comes from. And so I'm going to be wondering, I thought it would be good for you to just mention about that again, you know, where we are. I was trying to find it, you had only 514,000 fund balance, I think, sitting there. So anyway, you don't have to go over it, but I think it's going to be something, we have to take a close look at, because there are a lot of special projects for parks and recreation and arts and homelessness that get funded out of room tax. And so those may be subject to some of the greatest hits. And I think we're going to have to think about ways to not have those programs go away entirely. I mean, those funds are critical to our city and our quality of life. It seems like now more than ever, outdoor recreation seems to be quote-quote an antidote to what we're going through with this whole COVID pandemic. So I think that we're going to have to pay some close attention to not just shredding it, but figure out ways to maintain it. Same with the arts. I just had a meeting with the Arts Commission, that is the advisors on the budget. Of course, they're very concerned, that they should be, but they also know the role that art is playing in the recovery. And this has been demonstrated throughout the country already. Artists, of course, are often living not just paycheck to paycheck, but kind of art piece to art piece, so to speak. And we are a big funder of the arts in Reno. We're known as an arts city. And so if we want to retain that, we've got to get very creative. I was really impressed that the Arts Commission has already sought and been awarded several grant funds and those may be able to make up for some of the losses in room tax. Those particular grant funds are to grant to others, they're not for use in the city, but that is exactly what our commission focus is. I wanted to just add two questions or three before my time goes. One is on the general fund balance history, and if you could turn back to that page, we, you, you projected that while we're down from 18 and 19, you're projecting it looks like 13 million. You had mentioned 11, excuse me, sorry. You had said something about 11 million and I really didn't quite follow that number. No. Could you just go over that?
I said 11%.
Oh, 11%. Okay.
Yeah, last year, the current budget that we have for this fiscal year, we built it with a 11% fund balance. with a 11% fund balance. And then for next year, we built it with a 12% fund balance, because we were incrementally trying to get up to at least 16%.
And is the green line on that chart, or yellow, whatever color it is, is that an actual, I mean, is it a running average, or?
So the large bar is the...
The gray, unassigned?
Is the unassigned. The small bar is the assigned, which would be, you know, like encumbrances and things that, projects that we applied to. The line is a percentage line.
So it's showing...
It's showing where the percentage is.
Just above 12%?
Yeah.
For, that you're projecting for FY '21. And it seems much, much better. I mean, equal to, you know, in the middle of the last few years. So, I mean, it seems good to me. Do you feel good about it?
So, building a budget on 12%, it's still not where I would like our reserves to be. I mean, at a minimum, they should be at 15%, but...
That was my question.
When we're looking at overall how we rebuild the organization and make sure we're following all those best practices for financing our obligations, we haven't put our fund balance up there immediately, because we've incrementally tried to get there.
Okay.
I wouldn't recommend we have anything less than 15%. 16.67% is two months of operating.
Okay. So those are the numbers you didn't mention that I wanted to get out here on this record. And then, other question I had or one...
Ms. Dewar, can I come back to you? I apologize. I'm going to come back to you on the second round, but I'm going to start over again on the rounds with, it looks like Councilmember Jordan.
Thank you very much. And I am going to kind of echo a little bit what Councilwoman Weber said. And I understand that we are preparing for, I guess, what we would consider worst-case scenarios, although I think 5%, 10%, and 15% is probably not appropriate. I think it should be 10%, 20%, and 30%. But I think the concern is that by not talking about more today what those cuts look like and how we get there, we are giving the impression that we're going to go along, kind of, until we have more definitive data. And the concern is, when that picture becomes clear, are we going to be standing at a cliff when we could have been diverting from the cliff by making cuts sooner? Or at least at some level, to keep us from going off such a steep cliff? I'm not saying that we're not preparing for that. I know that we are. But by not giving more information on what the bigger picture looks like, on what those impacts could be, it gives the impression that we're just going along until we know for certain what things look like. I know that's not the case. I'm just saying what Manager Soto said about messaging, how we're going to ensure our city's delivery of services and safety in light of the COVID cuts that will be coming, how we're going to get there, I think is going to be critical. So I see all sides of this. I think it's more in how we deliver this than anything. My question is this. So, when do we anticipate having this next meeting with a bit more information on cuts that we will be having to make, potentially? I do think we will. And like Vice Mayor Reese said, I don't think the feds are going to come and save us, or certainly not anytime soon. So what happens July 1, when there are a number of pay increases set to go into effect to the tune of, you know, approximately 2%, 2%, 2.5% for most everybody, including ourselves? I'm hoping those are frozen? That's, I guess that's a question, because...
So the pay increases that we have approved and have agreements for have not been frozen. You know, so what we have is the directors are getting zero. They forego, they are not getting raises. The council is set to give a 2.8% increase on July 1. That's by resolution. That would take, the council would have to, that's a policy decision. RAPG Admin and RPE SAE...
Can I interrupt, because I know my time is going to run out? For those that don't require a negotiation, those should be on the next agenda for discussion. I find it crazy that we would roll out any kind of an increase with what we're facing.
Right. The only, the only group that is set for an increase that is not subject to negotiation is the city council.
Then that should be on our next agenda.
And so that would need to come forward from the city manager's office.
Thank you. And then as I'm finishing up here, it's not just on the cut side. I think we're all, and I'll be quick, Vice Mayor. I know we understand we're going to have to make some cuts, but we have to look at the revenue side as well. I think we're all learning that we can do some of our jobs from home, which to me means maybe that's what our new normal looks like going forward, and how can that convert into potential less footprint that we could turn around at City Hall and potentially lease out and have some additional revenue coming in. Thank you.
Before I move on, oh, go ahead.
One thing I would like to just assure the council, every department is working on their plans. They've given us their first round. Some of what they gave us has been rejected and asked to look again. That's to be expected. So we, the plan is that in the month of July, the directors will get together and create a strategic plan, that we will roll in front of the council for approval in the first meeting in September of, you know, how we would strategically shrink the organization and strategically bring it back, you know, and having phases, right? So that we would have opportunities to say, in Phase 1, which is maybe the 5%, these are the things we would do. And what I want to do is have all the directors get together and look across the whole organization and with the council's priorities, and put together a plan that you can support and defend to the public.
Thank you.
Councilmember Jordan, I also want to just touch on a point that Ms. Lochner made, which I think is an important one to understand. And this concept of, you know, sort of hurdling towards the cliff, I think is an important one to understand. Obviously, I hope that some of the things that we have already done as a city in terms of the layoffs, the reductions, the transfers, the getting leaner can help bring some peace of mind. But I also think it's important to acknowledge that, for example, Ms. Lochner said, our directors have already forged on their merit raises, which is, you know, 5%, I think, for most of them. So it's definitely something where we're all going to have to throw in with that. I think you're wise to look at certainly our council increases that are tied to costs of living, and we can have that conversation another day. But I guess ultimately what I'm saying is, our employees, we can't balance the city budget on their backs. They are certainly going to be willing to give, and we are going to work with all the stakeholders to find out ways to get through this together. But our most valuable resource, of course, I think for all of us, we continue to acknowledge is our employees. And so we will continue to prioritize making good decisions with the kinds of data-driven metrics that we can. But at some point in time, we have to acknowledge how very important our staff is to us and make sure they understand and know every day, as you have always done, which is fight for them and not against them. And so I want to just make sure I have communicated that to our staff and to my colleagues. I want to go now to Councilmember, oh, it looks like Councilmember Brekis. You're next up.
Thank you. You know, in response to Ms. Weber's comments, I do believe what we're doing today is somewhat mechanical, and it is a best practice. I am a little nervous waiting till September, though. I just, I know, I don't know. That makes me a little nervous. I think in a best-case situation where we didn't have a manager turnover, when we closed the building, recognizing that some people sent home, probably, you know, a 20-hour work week versus a 40-hour work week might have been a better practice for them, and maybe they should have been put in the furlough bunch also to kind of stop the bleeding. And if we're not going to, you know, address any of that until September, that, which would really be October, that makes me a little anxious. But, you know, if you're confident you can get through this fiscal year with just a $6 million hole, I think that'll be a good indicator on how you're reading the situation. And I don't mean to put you on the point, I just mean that, you know...
So we expect $6 million just from CTEC. So we're looking at somewhere between $6 and $8 million this year, and with the healthcare premium holiday, that reduces it by $2 million. So again, and we do have, the other thing we are doing that I'm not sure the council is aware, that every single purchase in the city is coming across my desk for approval from every department. It's been very fun. But again, so we're going to see also a larger turnback in services and supplies than we would expect in a given year.
Yeah, I hear you. I just, September does make me a little nervous. And then, and then I did talk to one of the FAB members, and they were going along the lines of heavier cuts than what, you know, you've been having, the conversations with the department heads. And I know you're talking to the bargaining groups. I think the unrepresented really isn't subject to bargaining groups. They're subject to resolution, and that's always at our discretion, just like our salaries are. And I do look forward to that conversation next time. I think it's one that we've had overdue. We inherited that last resolution, and it's time for us to look at it. I want to say also, if any positions get unfrozen, I think that that would be a good reporting by our manager to us. I'm actually advocating for the unfreezing of the sewer utility director position, maybe openness filled. I know it's a challenging time to recruit. But that was our last action, a personnel matter, was to change the charter to establish that position. And with us running up the, you know, the debt and the sophisticated nature of the project, I think we need to plug that picture in sooner than later. We're talking big dollars of that function, and we need, we need the right eyes on it. I'm looking also forward to what the manager said about this participatory budget in the interim. And I'd like to put the CIP program as part of that. I don't even have a copy of the CIP. I'm always trying to get things on the CIP, if nothing else, just as placeholders, so that they can be positions and points of advocacy for people who, you know, see these neighborhood projects going unmet, unmet, unmet. And also be a priority so that it's not so administratively driven, particularly in the sewer fund. So I, I don't know, maybe in July we could, or late June, we could just look at the CIP and go over that. And maybe that'd help if some shovel-ready money comes forward. The last thing I want to talk about is the seismic retrofit. I really would like to hold on that project for now. We're going into a contraction. We were in a contraction in 2012 when I came on. We barely fit in City Hall. And I think there's a need for a pause in thinking about City Hall. So, but I guess to make that cause, I need to know where we're at on it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Dewar.
Yeah, thank you. I had to drive right into it. Like Councilwoman Brekis earlier, I, too, was wondering about a force majeure associated with the bowling stadium and baseball, and I really think it's worth a look at that, because those are general fund transfers that we could potentially save. I also, I am hesitant to say this, and it's going to be very unpopular, but rather than take away, rather than give a raise and have to take it away and have that be a total conversation, I personally, again, unpopular, I would rather defer the raises, to be honest with you, until a point that we are comfortable. And just looking at our salaries and wages, a general fund, you know, it's over $100 million. Even if the savings were 2% to 3% to 4%, that's $2 to $4 million right there. And you've outlined for us $6 to $8 million. I say that because I know that it is the biggest part of our general fund. You know, our employees are critical. But, you know, I've been a government employee for many years in the past, and during the hard times, this is often what has to happen. And it's more of a deferment than a, you know, withdrawal. But I would, I would hate to give it in July 1, and then September, having to be, having it on the table to be taken away. So I do think it should at least be discussed, and again, I know it's very unpopular, but I think it should be at least discussed. I really do. And that's just how I feel. And it's nothing, the employees already give all day for our, and what they've done during the pandemic is not amazing. It's nothing to do with their productivity, their awesomeness, or what they do. It's just kind of where we are, and I think we can anticipate some significant cuts. One, on a positive note, so I'm saying discuss it. I'm not saying do it, but I think we should at least have that conversation. On a positive note, yesterday I met with the Housing Task Force, and that has representatives, and Councilwoman Jordan was on the phone, too. That has representatives from a variety of building areas. And for the most part, what I heard from Arlo Stockham, our Acting Assistant City Manager, and from them, is that at this point, at least in the pandemic, things have not slowed down. They are still building. They say there's demand for their products. They say that people are being able to make their rents, for the most part. A hit to the restaurant area, of course, and retail. So in the commercial sector, some hits, and they're working with people, which is really impressive, what they're doing. But at the same time, they said it's, they say capital hasn't dried up, that they're moving ahead, that the building department and our permitting department are as busy as ever. So I do think it's something else we factored in. It's sort of a counterfeiting. I don't know what that will look like in a couple of months, but for right now, going through the March, April, May, so far, they're on schedule. So I, that's one reason I want to wait and see how this, some of this shakes out, because it's sort of contrary to what your intuition would say. You'd think, well, everybody's going to pull into a hole and shut down. The only other thing I wanted to mention before I cede my time is the property tax and the CTEC history. You said they go opposite, and the way I read this chart is it seems that they're actually just a lag. It seems to me that they don't go quite as high, and the Advalorm property tax don't go as high, and it's a lag, but I don't think they're going in opposite direction. So I just ask you to take another look at that.
So what I was telling you was really in the historical look at, we have 20 years of data that goes back and looks at this data. And when CTEC, historically, it starts to go down, property tax is still going up at that point in time.
Right, so it's a lag.
Yeah, it's a lag, or it's, they're working opposite during those periods of times. It's just a different, different use of words.
Right, but for the last five years, they've both been trending up, both up. So it's not opposite. They're both up. One is lower than the other and lag. So I just think it's a different way of thinking about it. So I just, it's just on the revenue side, I wanted to mention it. With that, pass up a time.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Dewar. I know that, Madam Mayor, you have wanted to get in the queue, and I'm so sorry, I didn't see you earlier. So I'm going to go to you, and then I'll come to the council members for one last shorter round. So, Madam Mayor, can you hear me?
Yeah, thank you so much, Vice Mayor. Okay, so first of all, I don't want the headline to be "Council to receive raises." We've had this conversation with, well, I've had this conversation with probably two or three of you, and I think everyone across the board, not I think, I know, we would all agree, absolute no-go. So I want to just kind of clarify that, because this conversation sounds like it's the first time we've had it. And we haven't, because we've all sat on boards where we see that they are, you know, cutting dramatically, RSCVA. Every board I sit on is, you know, making massive modifications. So I just want to be very clear publicly that every single council person has agreed with this, so I don't want to see that kind of headline. Anyway, but moving forward, let's talk a little bit, it was probably around three months ago that I, and, you know, I watch the markets very carefully, but it was about three months ago, and I asked, and I said, we need to have two budgets. This market is getting extremely volatile, you know, worried about liquidity in the market, and you could just see, and, you know, following the stock market, what's been really interesting is that you would think that we are seeing much sharper dips. And there is something called this V-shaped recovery that, you know, is somewhat of an indicator, and we hope that's what it is. It, you know, it typically is, the faster you fall, the faster you come back, is what that looks like. But I did ask for two budgets, because I was extremely nervous, and I think council members have made some really good points. And I think council members have made some really good points about moving forward and looking at these cuts. And I think Councilwoman Jordan said something that we cannot give the perception to the community or our employees that moving forward, this is going to be the end-all, be-all budget. We couldn't really modify it because of the state and it is common practice. So, and this is what most cities are doing. I've checked in with other cities and asked them about their budget process because it's made me nervous. I asked for two budgets. So I think we have to be very honest and we have to be very public about that. But things could change drastically and be modified. Now, the other thing I would say is, it could go both ways, that we can make drastic cuts. If we do that, we have to remember, we still had not rebounded from the recession when it came to staffing levels. So if we do that, it will take that much more time and resources to build that back up. So you have to be sort of careful. You have to keep all four wheels on the bus, right? Rolling, everything's got to roll into sync. So we need to be very, very aware of that. You know, we still need to provide a great quality of life. There's, you know, we offer very, very many functions. So I just want to be very careful about if we start, you know, cutting, 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 we could find ourselves, we could very well find ourselves in a V-shaped recovery. I've seen some markets, I think Councilwoman Doer mentioned it. It's really interesting seeing some markets. You're probably going to see stability in the housing market. And the reason is, is all these lenders are offering forbearance. Some are offering six months to a year, which basically freezes your real estate market. So some markets are going to be better than others and some, as you've seen, actually are finding much more ways to be efficient. I think it's City Hall just working from home and offering better work-life balance to our employees, things like that. So I do think it's really interesting and unprecedented times. But I want to just be very careful about, you know, moving forward. So with that being said, you know, I, it's a tough, it's a tough one. This is a tough one, but none of us have a crystal ball. There is not one single council member that has a crystal ball, or even Warren Buffett to that matter. So what I would propose, and I know you're not going to like it, I would be supportive of this budget because we had to submit it. But I would also request that we have bi-weekly budget special meetings on this as we go forward so we can calculate exactly what the economy is doing. And also kind of put everyone on notice that moving forward, things could change. We are in, you know, volatile times. So I would just ask the council to support an initiative like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think part of the thing is, is that we all on this body collect information from different sources and sites. And we're in communication with different people. But at its core, we all want the best for the city. We all are excellent stewards of the resources of this community. And of course, we have staff who are, you know, experts and have, you know, degrees that help to navigate all of this. I think what I hope that people understand from our meeting today and those who are listening is simply this. We absolutely are aware of what the financial repercussions of this pandemic are likely to be. We understand that the policy decisions we make will be made based on information and data and expertise, that we will be communicating openly, honestly, and transparently with our community. And if that means more frequent, you know, communications or different styles of communication, I know all of us will be engaged in that. We are a strong and resilient community. I believe that we will get through this together and I'm happy to be a part of the planning. I think too, you know, something that struck me as important about Councilmember Weber's comments earlier are still important today. And that is, we had planning and strategic vision for this community. And I don't want us to give up on some of those goals. Obviously, some of those goals were public safety, our unsheltered populations, affordable housing. Public safety certainly is at the top of that list for all of us. But we still have a vision for what this community must go out and do. Now the task will be to, you know, roll up our sleeves and do the work. And I think we're all committed to doing that. I know we have one more comment in the first round by Councilmember Delgado. And so I want to go to him and then I'll come back to everybody for their last round of comments. But Councilmember Delgado, you've been patient and I know waiting in the queue. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And it won't take long. I was listening to all my colleagues and all their comments and the mayor appreciate all you guys' perceptions on all of this. And, you know, sadly, I think we've all talked about this before. Many of us have been here before. So I think many of us have that experience to kind of come forward about the tough decisions that need to happen. Understanding that really a lot of this comes back to making sure that we provide the core services. So what that really says is, go back, start to look at some of those initiatives or some of those projects that we've all worked on.
Councilmember Delgado, I apologize. Councilmember Delgado, your bandwidth or your computer widgets are not allowing us to hear you that well.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now. Sorry, there were some connectivity issues and I just want to make sure that you're heard.
Yeah, so essentially, just without taking up too much areas, I think we've been here before. We know what cuts we may, or decisions, tough decisions we look like we need to make, take here in the near future. And essentially, it's making sure that we can provide the core services while having to look at some of those other initiatives or projects that aren't necessarily core with our understanding of what we need to provide to the community. With that also in mind is we've also had some experience of understanding there's some return on investment of making sure that we have at least a position or two that is, that play a critical role in servicing some of those other pieces, such as affordable housing or homeless services, et cetera, where we need some more maybe expertise or maybe we have some, some staff members that now have garnered that expertise that we can now really lean on. Because I think over the last several years is, back in 2012 when we had to really look at the, at the budget and redefine it and change it. During this time, we also saw that there was a huge void in the community that we're doing a disservice that we didn't have expertise in certain areas where maybe we do now have. And so I want to make sure that our directors and I know our manager understands that just as much is really taking a hard look at some of those positions so we don't have to go back and revisit in terms of lessons learned. But I appreciate everyone's perspective, but I also support the budget, understanding that currently as it's laid out, understanding that we're going to have to make amendments. And I respect the mayor's position of saying that, you know, we may have to look at a bi-weekly report in until we don't. And then we start to phase out of having a bi-weekly visit in terms of where the budget moves. Because right now, things are quick and moving quickly in terms of federal funding, et cetera. So appreciate the time, appreciate everyone's question, the comments.
Thank you, Councilmember Delgado. I'm going to come now to each of the council members for our concluding comments. And I'll start with, I think the order I had been going in was Councilmember Jordan, you're up.
Thank you very much. And in summary, I do value very much the staff and all the hard work you guys are doing under incredible stress under these crazy circumstances. So thank, thank you all. I do support the mayor's initiative of moving on this. I think it is moving so quickly. It's important that we share that information. And, you know, it's okay to share that saying, we don't know yet or we don't have enough information yet. I think we will share what we can when we get the information and make decisions accordingly. And I was there during the last downturn. I know how difficult those decisions were. And I think that has shaped some of my cautious and concern with the approach to this because I know waiting can sometimes and will make the cuts deeper and more severe. So I think there is a way that we can preserve our very instrumental personnel while at the same time showing all the other things we're going to suspend, cut, or defer in order to do that and to meet the challenges that we're facing right now. So I just, I thank everybody for their work on this. And by whatever mechanism the, we need to do to go on record saying we are deferring or not deferring, but waiving our increases, council. My God, we could do that today and we'd end up talking about it. It's a voluntary waiving of the increase. Anyway, thank you, everybody, for all your work on this budget.
Thank you. Councilmember Breckus.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, I do endorse the mayor wanting, you know, at every meeting, because we meet every other week, to have a budget section. And, you know, if we need to go lighter on other initiatives because we're holding on those, then, you know, that's, you know, you spend your time how your priorities are. And so I think that's a good idea. I want to introduce another thought is, I think this budget includes allocations by some of our boards and commissions, like the Arts Commission, the seniors, and the Access Advisory Committee. And I think that our clerk is working on getting an agenda item to us to talk about what boards we're going to meet and what not meet. Obviously, we have statutory requirements for the Charter Committee and the Planning Commission, but some maybe not. And I think as the council's work is maybe very pinpointed and maybe shifting a little bit is if we do have those allocations and we make a decision that those boards don't meet, I think we should take that allocating authority and do it ourselves, frankly. Because the last, when they, you know, in good times, it's good to have the input. But by the time the allocations come up to us as a recommendation, you have invested parties in whatever allocation may go forward, whether it's a group that wants to do a piece of art or hold an event with some, you know, some of the funds. So I think we should be very, keep that close to us so that if we decide we need to divert those funds, one way or the other, it's on us. It's not a conversation to these other groups that may or may not be meeting. And then the second one is, Ms. Lochner, are there unrepresented people? And that's outside of people who are in bargaining groups who are scheduled to get July 1 raises or COLAs?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, so the, okay. So the time, we're always messing with the timing on that, okay.
So with the unrepresented employees at the courts, they, they look in the April timeframe, merit increases. And I believe the COLA increases were unrepresented this year, were done in January. And we typically are looking at doing those in January after negotiations have been completed on a go-forward basis. So there have been, for unrepresented, I don't see anything coming on July 1st.
Okay, oh, and follow up, the courts, if we do an augmentation of a percentage, we can augment during the fiscal year their budget, correct? Because they're so independent.
We do augment the court budget when we do augmentations if it's necessary. And they are also looking at their budget like everybody else to be willing to save money.
Last question, is the event-centered bonds, is the general fund exposed on those?
Not for next year because of the, the money we had in the bank has been, the primary pledged revenue had been outperforming. So we have enough money in the bank for next. It may be that we have to hit the secondary pledge or third pledge, actually, of CTAC in the following year. But we'll continue to monitor that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Weber.
Bless you.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to say that I absolutely support the mayor's initiative. And I think that it's going to be really important for us to meet as much as possible to work through the process over the next few months. So, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Madam Mayor, I know you had some comments that you wanted to make. I see your hand raised.
All right, thank you so much. First of all, I want to thank our incredible staff. I know you guys have all worked so hard. I want you to know that we're all grateful in so many ways. It's really impressive to see in times as difficult as these, the people that really come together and step up. It really makes you reflect on, you know, when the ship's going down, who you want as your team. So I just want to say thank you so much to Chief Soto and Deborah Lochner and Arlo and Dylan and Rebecca. And, you know, you're never supposed to call out names because you're going to forget people and then regret it and spend two days thinking, why didn't I mention this person? So please, if I didn't mention your name, it doesn't mean that I'm not grateful for all the work that you've put in. I've been so impressed. I think that's one thing everyone should understand in our community is how hard and how diligent the staff has been. So I just want to say thank you so much to each and every one of you. I want to also say thank you so much to the council. I know all of you have worked incredibly hard during this difficult time. So please know that, you know, I recognize that. And, you know, it's not easy. And I would also say, I think Councilwoman Jordan, you know, made a good point. If that's something that we can do today, I definitely think we move forward and, you know, in looking at not taking those increases moving forward. I think that that shows, you know, that we're all committed moving forward. So again, thank you, everyone. I really appreciate you.
Okay, I want to conclude by coming to Councilmember Doer.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to add a little bit of nuance to some of my comments and then potentially throw out a motion. My whole focus is on maintaining our staff. That is the last thing I think that we should even talk about cutting. They are the people that get the work done. Whether they have a better truck or a worse truck, whether they have a nicer desk or a less nice desk, that is, that's where it begins and ends for me, is our staff. I think we've all learned a lot about work-life balance through this pandemic and ways, again, that we can maybe give some flexibility to our staff, whether it's in changing work schedules, going to four-ten's, maybe it's working at home part of the time. I think all of these, everybody's different and they're looking for something different out of work. In addition to working and getting their paycheck, it's very rewarding, I think, to work in public service for a government agency. And I think we owe it to our staff to be as creative as we can with any kind of, you know, work-life flexibility in the job. And I think this pandemic has showed that. I also want to go on record as saying I do strongly support moving forward with the seismic retrofit. I know that Councilwoman Breckus brought it up earlier. She's already made her point. But whether they're working at the office 30% of the time, 50% of the time, or even 10 years from now if we sell the building, it's incredibly important to have a safe building. And that is why I've been pushing this for the last, I would say, at least three or four or five years. I would really think we need to go ahead with it. It's a must for me. In terms of doing the, I think, I want to concur. We need to start with, we're going to pay raise for ourselves. We need to lead, not follow, and we need to set away. So I 100% would put that into a motion. And then lastly, I want to explain a little bit about why I might support at least discussion about these pay raises. And that is, my understanding is, last time, when all the departments were asked to make proposals to cut their budgets, some people have more money in their budget, some people have less. And some people ended up offering salary cuts and some didn't. And the salary cuts were implemented differently throughout the organization. And I think that's a bad precedent, that if you happen to have more money and you can cut, you know, services and supplies or your furniture budget or give up a truck and your people don't have to end up with a salary cut and others that don't have that kind of flexibility, all they've got to give is their salary. And that's why any kind of conversation about salary cuts, I think, should be looked at across the board and not given up on a department-by-department basis in this five, 10, 15, or 20. So at least you understand where I'm coming from. Since I've been on council, I've heard nothing but we never made back up the money we gave up in the so-and-so, you know, cut. And I don't want to repeat that experience. So I hope that kind of puts some context around some of my comments. I see you want to respond, Ms. Lochner. And then I'd like to maybe move forward with closing the item out of the budget, I mean, with that recommendation.
Right, yeah, I just want to assure you that our message all along and even in my discussions with the bargaining groups has been that our goal is to affect our employees as little as possible. So while we may not do a reduction in their actual salary or forego their raises, we might consider a furlough, which is more of a temporary reduction. And then you don't have that long slog back up to where you were. Very cognizant of the fact that, you know, throughout my whole career, I've been dealing with, we cut this 20 years ago, 15 years, 10 years ago. And, you know, short of going back and actually pulling out the data and proving, you know, yes or no, I'd rather look at a program where our labor groups are coming to the table with us to come up with these solutions and not tell them they're not going to get their raises on July 1st. We may be coming back and saying, we're going to furlough you for... We may be coming back and saying, "We're going to furlough you for five days," and it's going to be across the board, it's not going to be in one department or another. That's why the department directors will be getting together and coming up with those phases of where, where we can go. Not every department can give up equally. Like you said, you look at civil service as a department of three people. So their services and supplies, while 5% may not be a large dollar amount for them, it certainly affects the service they can provide. And so we have to look as department directors how we can continue to provide that service have the least effect on our employees and maybe, and looking at providing, as Vice Mayor Reece said, those core services and letting go some of the nice-to-have services. But that is a discussion that we're going to have as a group so that we can work up a plan that the council can support, and it's not piecemeal.
Okay, well, that really, you really encapsulized where I was going, is that I believe they should have the flexibility, time is more important to some people, money is more important to some people, doing a variable furlough where it's not maybe five days in a row, but they get to pick for five days, that kind of thing, I think, could be a real, that's the kind of thing I'm talking about when I'm talking about flexibility in their work-life balance and what they'd like to see. And I love that idea, having them come to the table with those kind of proposals. So that, I don't know, Mr. Vice Mayor, if you are prepared to hear a motion or...
Yes, I'm prepared for a motion.
Okay. I would move that we support the budget as presented with one change, that any salary increase that's associated with the city council be deleted from the budget and put into unbalance, any funds there. And that we adopt the mayor's proposal of continuing to look at the budget every two weeks, in concurrent, either in our council meetings or separate meetings, however you guys decide to figure that out. And that would be my motion.
Second for discussion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Let's open it for our discussion. Let me maybe start. I want to just clarification about part of the motion, and that is, you want to see on every agenda, essentially a placeholder for discussion about budget-related things is what you're asking for.
That, or a separate meeting depend, if we have a full agenda, it gets very difficult to have an adequate discussion. I'm leaving it to staff.
Okay, and I appreciate that, and I think Councilmember Breckus even wisely said, you know, we need to make priorities about what we're putting onto our agenda that may relate to that. So I appreciate you, and we'll be supporting the motion. But let me come to Councilmember Breckus for discussion.
Yeah, I think in the council salary, that would probably involve also bringing the resolution forward again at the subsequent meeting, but I think it can be done in this motion. And I just want to respond on the earthquakes, quake seismic. I'm someone who has carried earthquake insurance my whole, all the time I've owned a property, and it keeps increasing, and his own life trajectory in retrospect was really sent off in a way due to a significant earthquake when I was a young person. So I absolutely take it seriously. I just want to bring it up at City Hall. There's been a recent sale downtown of a high-rise building. We have serious considerations because we're, you know, a little bit into the police station reconfiguration, and I don't see debt going as planned for that. And I think the world of offices are going to be reexamined very much, and we're no stranger to considering reexamination of office space, because these conversations were happening in 2012 when we were hardly occupying that building. And I think decentralization is something, we have other resources, and we could use the tax revenue in the area of downtown. So putting that property back on the roll. So I just want to, I just don't want my comments to be misconstrued, particularly as the serious nature, since we've had the big earthquake in the last week in Nevada, about how serious I do take earthquakeing. I just feel that we should have some discussion about that building.
Thank you. And before we call for the question, I want to go to Mr. Shipman or Mr. Hall. I'm concerned that the, a part of the motion that relates to city council salaries perhaps is premature and would need to come back. Can anyone address that before we take it up? I mean, I'm in favor of the concept and happy to participate fully, but just don't want to run afoul of the open meeting law or anything like that. Mr. Shipman or Mr. Hall, can you comment on that?
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Vice Mayor, I think in concept, it's fine. We're just looking at the charter right now, and it does provide for the waiver of payment of any part of salary or benefits payable. So we just want to, I mean, I think to be in order, what we'd request is, you know, just pass it with that being the intent, but then we will come in with a cleanup item at the next meeting if that works for city council.
Sure.
Okay, and I think I understood that, Ms. Duer, to be your intention, that it was an intentional, a thought bubble, and that it would have to come back when it did. And so it looks like I have everyone out of the queue except Councilmember Duer. Did you want to comment? Okay, go ahead.
Yeah. I wanted to make sure that my motion included adopting the fee schedule, and that was clear. It's listed on the agenda, but I wanted to be clear about that. And secondly, just don't really want to debate this, but Ms. Breckus brought it up about the earthquake. It wasn't just that we had a large earthquake, 6.5 on the Richter scale, but it was the largest earthquake that we've had in 30 years in Nevada. And I think just the way things are going, we're probably going to see more. So, and then lastly, I think whatever we invest in the building will be recovered, we will recover those funds. The building will be worth more. It won't be depreciated because it doesn't meet a seismic standard, if you see what I mean. I think it will be better off. Anyway, enough said about all that. Appreciate the work of staff, and just want to make sure we included the fee schedule there.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Duer, a second by Councilmember Breckus. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I would like to note for the record that that was adoption of the budget for the Reno City Council as well as the redevelopment agency. Additionally, that motion did include the fee schedule adoption for both. With that, we are transitioning to general public comment, of which I have none registered.
I think, Madam Clerk, we did receive one public comment during the meeting. Ms. Huntsman sent it to all of us, and it was from Mr. Jeff Church. So just noting it for the record. At this time, I'll look for a motion for adjournment.
So, Ms. Jordan.
Second, Weber.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Jordan, a second by Councilmember Weber. Any further discussion at this time? Seeing none, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please say no. Motion carries unanimously. Is that for both the redevelopment agency and this?
We will take that adjourned as both. So both of your meetings are adjourned at this time, and we will note council is meeting with their regular meeting next Wednesday, May 27th.
Thank you.